All right. I'd like to introduce the United States of America and to our God, for which we stand, a foundation under God, and in this world, the very beginning of our struggle.
Good evening. First order of business, roll call.
Mayor.
President.
First Ward.
Here.
Second Ward.
Here.
Third Ward.
Fourth Ward.
Here.
Fifth Ward.
Here.
Sixth Ward.
Here.
All present except for Third Ward, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under the general agenda, number one, please.
Resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to sign the Unified Court System Maintenance Operations voucher for the period October 1, 91 through September 30, 92.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carry two, please.
Whereas the meeting of the council held on November 17th, a resolution was passed to accept the proposal submitted by Shoe Roofing, an amount of $22,000 for emergency repairs to the Warm Memorial Roof, subject to the approval of the city's insurance company. Whereas after their review, the city's insurance company has recommended that the city accept the proposal submitted by Stanley Green Roofing, an amount of $14,128 rather than that of Shoe Roofing. Now therefore be it resolved that this council hereby accepts the proposal submitted by Green Roofing, an amount of $14,128 for emergency repairs to the Warm Memorial Roof, based on a recommendation of the city's insurance company. And be it further resolved that the resolution to accept the bid of Shoe Roofing is hereby rescinded, based on the recommendation of our insurance company.
What happened was that the original resolution to accept Shoe's bid was subject to approval by the insurance company. Insurance company didn't approve, they said, "Take the low bid or we don't pay." So, we're taking the low bid. Motion, please.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carry three, please.
Resolved that the zone change request submitted by the Chamber of Commerce for a change of zone from M1 Manufacturing to C2 Commercial, for their property located on South Second Street, for the purpose of constructing a public service building, is hereby referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation.
I'll move it. Second. All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carry four, please.
Resolved the following bills are hereby approved for payment. Tracy Road Equipment, $1,500 for vehicle parts. Car Grill Saw, Philadelphia, PA, $1,499.23 for road saw. Babcock Oil, $2,780.20 for fuel. And Mill Baldwin Construction, $2,238 for sidewalk repairs.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carry five, please.
Resolved that the mayor is authorized to sign a quitclaim deed between the City of Fulton and Pamela Monk, for her property located on 413 Beach Street, as per attached, subject to the approval of the city attorney.
I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carry six, please.
Whereas the meeting of the council held on November 5th, a resolution was passed increasing Class V retirees and former city employees' insurance premium payments by 10 percent effective January 1, based upon estimated experience. And whereas per the letter dated November 25th from Upstate Administrative Services, it is recommended that the current 92 rates should be used until January 1, 94. Now therefore be it resolved that the resolution passed on November 5th to increase Class V retirees and former city employees' insurance premium payments by 10 percent effective January 1, 1993 is hereby rescinded in its entirety. Be it further resolved that the current insurance premium payments for Class V retirees and former city employees remain in effect until January 1, 1994.
I'll move it. The retired employees who are entitled to carry insurance with the city have a premium that's fixed by the insurance carrier. When, beginning of, was it last year or this year?
Last year.
Last year. We switched over to, say, self-paying, different system. The only experience city had to go on was that that was recommended by the former insurance company, and they had recommended the raise that turned out to be erroneous. And the company that we're now using, if you want to call it that, Upstate, has said that that raise was too high, that the premiums they were paying was more than what was being paid out. So that it wasn't fair to them to be paying excessive premiums with the amount of two. Actually, what we were doing was making money on those retirees. And of course, the city can't do that. We're not, we can't make money and make profit. All we can do is meet the bills, hopefully, and hope we have enough money in the treasury to pay them. That's what it's all about.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carry seven.
Resolved that this common council hereby accepts the quote submitted by Security Mutual for the city employees' life, an AD&amp;D insurance effective January 1, 1993, at 46 cents per thousand.
Yeah, when we switched over from, was it CNN Insurance Company on our health accident insurance, we still had our life insurance with CNN, and they just canceled us. So of course, we had to go out and get new coverage. And this is the coverage under Security Mutual of the life insurance that employees carry under contract. And they have given us the coverage, had to reduce costs, in other words, we're paying less now for the same coverage that we paid CNN. Motion, please.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carry eight, please.
Resolved that this common council hereby accepts the quote submitted by NAP Electric, RD7 Fulton New York, to replace standard ballast from fluorescent fixtures in the municipal building, with energy-saving ballast in the amount of $12 per fixture. Said cost to be a direct charge to the A1620 building account.
I'll move it.
Second. The Niagara Mohawk did a survey, and we conducted a test on the substitution of a low-energy ballast, which furnished the same amount of light. A ballast is an attachment to fluorescent light, without which the bulbs don't light up. And the result was that we found we can save $28,000 a year in electrical bills, and this is costing us, what, Joe?
$5,000, just roughly over $5,000.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no.
You're against it, Jim?
No, 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 he asked me a question, and I told him, "No, I'm sorry." Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, fellas.
Carry nine, please.
Resolved that the Downtown Fulton Business Association has requested a banner permit to erect a banner over Route 481 from December 3rd through December 31st. Whereas Article 5 of the Fulton City Charter states that no banner can be erected for more than two weeks without consent of the common council. Now therefore be resolved, the city clerk is hereby directed to issue a license to the Downtown Fulton Business Association according to subsection 177-25 of the Fulton City Ordinance entitled banners.
I'll move it.
I'll second it. All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carry 10, please.
Whereas the city clerk has received quotes for the City of Fulton liability insurance policy as follows. First bit I have is from Perma in Colony, New York. Their total is $258,715. And what they did is they put in an original quote of $233,427, and after confirming with them, they had to bid on all the policies, and our police professional and public officials' policy are not due until April and May of next year, so I told them they had to add those, because that's part of our policies. So they did that, and I just calculated it, and that's what it comes up to be, $258,715. The next bit I have is from Streeter and Van Sanford, Fulton, New York. Your Honor's opening up the, or reading the Streeter, will open up the Lads Agency from North Syracuse. The Ladd Agency has a bid of $212,581. Okay, what they did is, they put in some options, which I have to be reviewed by the mayor, city attorney, myself, but their initial quote, total package is $257,101.59. Yes, and a zero deductible. They also put a $222,631.59 for a $1,000 deductible.
What was that, $222.631.59?
They also put a $196,120.59 with a $3,000 deductible.
What was that, $196,120.59?
$196,120.59. Another price of $176,604.59 with a $5,000 deductible. And... And the last option was $156,834.59 with a $10,000 deductible.
What was that second one again, Joe? $222 what?
$222,631.59.
Joe, could you read those deductibles again?
Okay, the first deductible was $1,000.
I thought the first one was no deductible.
The $257,101.59 is based on zero deductible. The $222,631.59 had a $1,000 deductible. The $196,000 bid was for a $3,000 deductible. The $176,000 bid was a $5,000 deductible. And the $156,000 bid was a $10,000 deductible.
I think the council should talk to Mr. Drone, there's some pretty important discrepancies in there that he's pointing out. Some things that are overinsured, some that are underinsured, as well as different coverages. He has an umbrella policy in there that we don't have, and any other policies, and $1 million, which is very significant.
He give a quote, though?
No, he didn't give a quote, because of course, it's not the same as the existing policy, so couldn't give you a quote until he knows what you want to do, based on what his recommendations are.
I just don't know if it's fair to the other people that submitted one, you know?
Well, I think that he's talking about a pretty substantial savings. For example, on one coverage alone, you save, or was it, $15,735.
Should we refer to our city attorney, him looking over?
I would, I would think so.
My only comment is, is, Your Honor, is, when these bids were given out, all parties were given a very fair chance to bid. They requested oodles upon oodles of information from me, which I gave them, and I told them all that it would be an apples-to-apples bid. And, and if you, if, the only comment I have is, if, I'm sure every other agency involved here that bid could lower their price by giving different options.
They'd like to talk to us again, too, maybe.
As Mr. Drone is.
Well, what he's pointing out is not necessarily different options. He's pointing out where you can save money on coverage, which is a little different thing. If, if you're overinsured, for example, and you can save $15,000, I think that's pretty important.
I think it would be who of us to refer this to our city attorney, maybe have a meeting?
Yeah, I would suggest something like that before you make a decision on your coverage.
We have an insurance committee also, and they should be present.
Preferred city attorney and the insurance committee?
Okay. All right. Resolved that the bids are hereby referred to the city attorney and the insurance committee of the council, for their review and recommendation to be returned to the council at their next regular meeting, the December 15th. Be it further resolved that this council reserves the right to reject any and all quotes that they deem not to be in the best interest of the City of Fulton, or if they deem them to, the quotes to be too high.
We have to have it ready by the 15th, right?
Well, the premiere, the year end, January 1, we have no coverage if you're going with somebody else.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carry 11, please.
Resolved that subsection 162-3 of the Fulton City Code titled Storage is hereby amended to read as follows. Storage of motor vehicles and recreational vehicles. In any residential district, the following regulations shall apply. A. Vans, buses, and trucks of more than 3/4 ton carrying capacity. Motor vehicles used for drag or stock car racing. And an abandoned or junk vehicle must be parked in an enclosed garage. For purpose of this section, an abandoned or junk vehicle shall mean any vehicle which is unlicensed for a period of more than one year, or not in condition for legal use on the highway. B. Trailers, campers, boats, snowmobiles, and other recreational vehicles shall be parked in a garage, or side, or rear yard. Exceptions to these parking location regulations may be granted after issuance of a special permit.
Are we going to have a public carry down this?
This is it.
So we bid advertise them?
Yes.
Yes, I am Detective Allen, and I would like to know why recreational vehicles are being included with this, with this junk ordinance?
Well, it's not a junk ordinance. A portion of it is, deals with junk cars, vehicles, but the rest of it is, really deals with the storage of RVs, so that they won't become a nuisance.
Well, I guess my question is then, what constitutes storage?
Well, as it says, they have to be parked in a garage, or on the side, or rear yard. One of the problems we're running into, and I have a man who was in again today who's real hot about it, is they, this RV, which is a good-sized travel trailer, is parked in the front yard, and it blocks his view of the street when he's coming out of his driveway, and creates a real hazard. And that's part of why, what the council's trying to remedy here.
Well, just to give you an example of my own particular case, I have two snowmobiles on a trailer. Now, at this time of the year, there is no way that I can put those to the side of the house, because if I did, they'd sink with the moisture in the ground. I have to wait until the weather is such that the ground freezes open, as other people for the same situation. Now, in the wintertime, I use those constantly. In the summertime, they're in my garage, because I don't use them. That's why I asked you, what constitutes storage?
Well, that's not storage, not when you're using them. That's something in use, that wouldn't be considered storage. I mean, storage would be in the summertime, when they're not in use.
Words there, if it's out of season, for whatever the case may be, then it wouldn't be considered as...
Right.
Now what about the case of motorhomes?
Motorhomes, if they're not in use, they would be in storage. And if you're not using it in the wintertime, then you'd have to park it in the side yard or the rear yard.
Who determines if you use them? You know, I mean, I'm just trying to look at things that, from a, you know, from a realistic standpoint, that if you don't have people, somebody's going to make a judgment call.
Well, you know, there isn't any way in God's world, Dick, that you can propose an ordinance of this kind, it's going to cover every last situation in the city. All you can do is go on the experience of other cities, is what we're doing here, and using an ordinance that's similar to that that's used in another city, and then try to adapt it. The ordinance officer is not going around the city and pick on people who, where there's some question about it, he's going to err in the side of the resident, because, you know, we're not going to, we don't enjoy issuing tickets if there's a violation. But when there's a gross violation, that definitely encroaches upon somebody else's right, or creates a hazard, especially a safety hazard, then somebody's going to be cited. And that's really the basic purpose of this ordinance.
Is that for all the complaints? Somebody's complaining about a neighbor's vehicle that's possibly in their way, then they would have the ordinance to back up that complaint. Otherwise, it's not really a complaint, and the vehicle is, say in this case, where it's on the side, until it can use that. If people aren't complaining about it being there, they're probably not going to run around and see whose vehicles are where they shouldn't be.
He's not going to be running around the city looking for reasons to complain or issue tickets, believe me. He's got a lot, too much to do. I think he was first.
I wholeheartedly agree with you on the junk cars that are parked around the city. But as most of you know, that I, I'm one of your local landlords, and every now and then we're confronted with somebody abandoning a car, which, you know, it just happens, somebody leaves a car in your yard, and how do you get rid of that car? When you don't have the title. You can't tow it out, because it's his car, because you can be arrested for theft. How do you, you know, this is a good ordinance, but how does an individual that's stuck with a car, on his property, get rid of it when he doesn't have the title?
There isn't another answer to that.
Take your chances.
Well, that's...
There really isn't any answer to it. I agree with you, it's a problem, and that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm not a landlord anymore, and haven't been for many years. Yeah. And you know, I'm a lawyer, can handle my own legal problems, and I opted out of it about 30 years ago. No, I don't know the answer to that. I agree with you, it is a problem. I agree with you, it is a problem.
I think it's a good ordinance, but you can't, as an individual, you cannot implement it, and there's no way to protect yourself.
Well, I agree with you. I suppose it's how you select your tenants, and you can't always be right about that either.
And once the ordinance is implemented, is this the same action that they took in the past, that they will be giving you a, a notification letter, once it's been there a year, that you will be charged fifty dollars a day if it's not been removed?
Yeah.
That.
Yeah. I don't know what the fine is, but that's, that's the idea.
I, that's the, my, and then this means that the, if this, this vehicle was drivable, the person that's keeping track, that's had to keep a record, saying that this vehicle was parked November first, or December first, and a year from now, he comes along and says it's now been there a year unlicensed, it's a very complicated ordinance.
As I recall, there's a provision in the Motor Vehicle Bureau that I think gives the police power to do something about removing a vehicle when it's been abandoned. Because I invoked that when somebody abandoned a vehicle on my lot, and when I sent them a notice, it got removed in a hurry.
You were the city judge?
No, not at that time.
But anyway, I go off to the, they found me, they're suggesting that...
Well, check the motor vehicle law, I'm pretty sure that, unless it's no longer there, but it was at that time.
And then I'd relay this, the guy won't tow it away unless he's got the title, because he'd go to jail.
I wish I knew all the answers to that, but I don't. I, I don't. It is, it is a complicated situation.
To the council, as a taxpayer, you know, I want these guys to figure out some way that as a, you know, substantial taxpayer in this town, that I don't get caught up in some cockamamie law that you're passing, that I can abide by.
Well, I don't know the answer to that. That may be one of the risks of being a landlord. Part of, part of this problem arose, arose as the disposing of junk cars when they started issuing titles to cars. You know, until that time, you know, the junk dealers would take your, the cars without any problem, but once title law got into effect, that was a whole new ballgame. You're welcome. I think that young lady was next, Alice.
Well, Steve decides or determines that an ordinance, sure, I mean, a citation should be issued, is the court going to stand behind him?
Don't ask me to answer that question.
Well, that's why we had our city attorney rewrite the junk car ordinance for that purpose, so that...
If they want, if they get as far as the court, they get signed in there.
That's true.
That, that was not his fault. What happened to the junk car ordinance where the test was whether it'd been licensed for a year or not, that was stricken by the Court of Appeals of the State, the highest court of the state. And when they issue an opinion, that becomes the law of the state, and he was only following that dictate, which he must. Yeah, I know what you mean, but I don't want to get into that. Okay, Ross. Did you have your hand up? I didn't think so. Alice?
Does someone on the council find out from the state what they do about these cars? Because they seem to have laws like when you turn in your registration plates. If you don't turn them in, they're going to take your license away. This is what they told me.
That's right.
And if they can take your license away just because you don't turn in your plates, and then they even charge you two dollars or a dollar, now it's down to a dollar, thank goodness. And what, if you don't turn them in, they take your license away. Well, to have a car towed away, why don't they give the, something, somebody on the council the power to do something about it? Get the serial number on the car, get the guy who owned it, and take his license and registration away. I mean, that's one way people will stop doing, breaking the law, they're going to get caught. But if they're not going to get caught, they're always going to break it.
Alice, right to President, to Governor Cuomo and our Congress, not Congresswoman, our Assemblywoman and State Senator, and keep your fingers crossed, the state taketh, and they don't give you nothing. And they don't really care whether we got a problem or not.
You're not telling us what to do with your car?
I agree, but that's what the status is. It would be a fairly simple matter for the state to pass a law, say, giving junk, junkyard owners and operators some kind of power to accept junk cars, once it determination had been by the court that it was a junk car, but we don't have that privilege. And, you know, that would be too simple for the state. If you read the Pal Times, they, I know, the OVN, I think it was, our Congresswoman, or I keep calling her Congresswoman, I, I've already advanced her to Congress, and she doesn't know it. But Brandy Sullivan had a couple of letters there about state mandates in there, and she's absolutely right. Seems like they mandate doing a lot of things that don't help us and cost us, but they don't mandate things that'll help us. So I don't know the answer to those questions. Anybody else?
Yes, and in reference to the landlord, he has a very good point, because I have a lot of junk cars in my ward, they've been there since I've been in office, and they're not moved. I've had the same car on North Sixth Street up on blocks for a couple of years. Steve has sent out violations, and he said he can't get anybody to tow it, because there's, because there's no title. So, you know, your point was valid, and I, and I understand what you're thinking. What good is it? You know, is, and Steve, is this going to help us at all by changing the wording? Are we going to get somebody to tow these cars?
I think that, right now, we're getting rid of probably fifty percent or more voluntarily, and maybe it'll help us get, get rid of maybe another ten percent.
But people that voluntarily comply with the law are not our problem, it's the ones that don't comply that we're complaining about. And to refer to, to the mayor, you can get a car towed away, it depends upon where it's abandoned. If it's abandoned in a parking lot, the police will come, because I've called them for abandoned cars in Joe Young's parking lot, and they've towed cars away there. But they won't tow cars away on private property.
Again, what did they do with the car? Where they took it?
I have no idea.
That's the problem. A lot of guys, a lot of junkies, all have been burned on this, and they're really careful about no title.
I see the problems in my ward, Ross, that you have had.
Your Honor, under Section twelve twenty-four of New York State Vehicle and Tragedy Law related man and vehicles, under subdivision D, it states, "For more than ninety-six hours on property of another, if left without permission of the owner." That's what constitutes an abandoned vehicle, so you can't make a complaint on it.
Yes.
What is this guy threatening? That's it? Here, let me write this.
Says, "For more than ninety-six hours on property of another, if left without permission of the owner."
Yeah, that's what the, that's, that's the section that I use to get the one removed from my property.
But Steve has told me that he's called several people to tow cars, and he can't get anybody to tow them. They won't touch them unless they have the title, so I, I don't know, it's, it is a problem.
Yeah, it is.
It was permitted in there for a public agency also, and there is no lights affixed there to, or for title.
Police really have the authority. Any other comment?
What about if it's, if it's on their own property, but it's up on blocks or something, and it's been there for months? That wouldn't apply then, would it?
You mean this statute or this ordinance?
Well, I, I assume this would, but what Brian just read, as far as getting it towed...
Oh, as far as getting it towed away, I don't think it makes any difference. Put it on a flatbed. Anyone else? Motion?
I'm with it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Carry. Want to get back to the bids on insurance, there was a bid by St. Peterman Sanford, and we don't want to overlook that.
Okay, he bid a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. However, we're going to have to review this, because it was based on a lot of options that was not asked for, so the mayor and the city attorney will have to review this letter. But we should note at least that he did have a, a bid on there.
Okay, thank you.
I'm much more comfortable with that. I say I'm much more comfortable with that, knowing that... That is not apples-to-apples bid, no?
No.
It's not. But at least it, it's something. I didn't think it was fair to the other three that, you know, it looked like we didn't have nothing.
Well, if that bid were going to be seriously considered, then you'd have to give the others an opportunity to match it. Okay, number twelve, please.
Resolve that the common council hereby accepts the annual maintenance agreement for Mid-State Elevator effective January one ninety-three in amount of twenty-two-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars.
Second? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Okay, under discussion. First item is garbage sticker fees.
I just want to note that this wasn't on our pre-agenda either, and I, I believe that we should have a hearing and let constituents come down and voice their concerns over this increase. It's a substantial increase of fifty cents, and I believe that all the people of the city of Fulton who pay this fee should be able to come down and, and talk to us about it in an open forum meeting of the common council.
Well, we got a resolution, a resolution can be offered if there's a motion table or any other action, of course, that can be done after the motion is proposed, or the resolution is proposed.
Okay. I, I'd just like to see what the alternative plan would be to, to meet that revenue that we've set forth in a budget. You know, I wouldn't entertain table and anything like that. I mean, if we got an alternate plan that's feasible and we can work with it, then maybe we could look at it, but, you know, I'd like to see an alternative plan presented before.
This has been made public for the last couple of weeks, because I've gotten calls on it, people stopping in my shop, and what they told me is to keep going with what we have with the stickers.
Alternative plans, Jim, is what they went through chapter and verse last year. My God, do you want to go through that again?
No, I meant that, you know, I, personally, I, the sticker system's the best, the best way at this point. It, it doesn't make any sense, really, to get out of it. And all I'm asking, all to remember Lincoln, is if he has an alternative plan in the way of a flat fee or something, that, you know, he, he can present it, you know?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Originally, I was really not in favor of increasing the price of the garbage sticker, due to the fact that the problems that I've had in my ward, and with talking with some of the other people on the council, the problems they've had in their wards with people not putting stickers on and saving trash, creating extra overtime for the DPW and whatnot, not knowing that we had laws on the books that would deal with these people if they are in violation of putting these stickers on. It was presented to us tonight, earlier, and they can be dealt with for not complying. With that in mind, I don't know any fairer way to impose a fee on the people that use it proportionately. If we were to, if we were to generate a flat fee, there are many people that would be paying for something that they would not be getting the service out of, whether they not be here in the wintertime or whatever the case may be. Therefore, I think that the increase probably would be the fairest way to implicate an increase in the, in the trash pickup, and only the people that use it will be paying for it.
Originally, I, I, too, was opposed to stickers when this first proposed last year, and I've done a lot of soul searching on it myself, and the advantage of the stickers is that the people who get the service are the ones who pay for it. You have people who are gone on the, the winter many times, and if you had a flat fee, for example, they would be paying for something they weren't getting. You have the elderly, many of whom have a minimum amount of trash, and maybe, say, one bag, for example, while someone else with a family would have three or four. And again, those elderly people, or anyone else who uses a minimum amount, would be penalized by paying for somebody else's trash, that's what it amounts to. And of course, for landlords, it would mean that they would be paying a large sum for their tenants. There are a lot of discrepancies and a lot of unfairness about a flat fee, for example. On the increase, you have it already budgeted, the budget committee has worked a long time on the budget. They came up with an increase was necessary to carry the costs of trash removal, otherwise it's going to be an increase in taxes. And again, you're going to have the taxpayers who are paying for the, the garbage removal, trash removal, because there isn't enough money to meet the budget, it's that simple. If you need, say, another a hundred thousand dollars in the budget to balance the budget because of the increased cost of trash removal, then you either increase the sticker fees, or you increase the taxes. It's what it all boils down to. And the council or the standing committee that worked on the budget figured, and I, and I have to agree with them, that it's fair that that be paid by the people who are putting out the trash, so...
I might add only this, though, when we first came up with the fifty cent proposal, everyone thought that that was going to cut the mustard also, and it didn't.
Well, I mean, what do you want, John? You want an increase in taxes, or what do you want?
I'm just making that comment.
I understand that.
The reason for that is, it was our first time out with this, we had no idea how much was going to be used and collected. Now we have a year's worth of history on it, and we know that a dollar a bag, based on this year's revenues, and the amount of garbage that's being picked up, taken to landfill, should cover it.
And then next year, when we have the same type of problem, then you'll want to go to a buck fifty a bag.
Oh, what do you propose, John? All you're saying, all you're saying is you're against it, you don't have anything to, to take its place, that's going to produce the same revenue, so instead of just saying, I'm against it, you know, give us some other option.
That's kind of what I was asking earlier.
Okay, when, when we were all, when the stickers first came around, and it was a matter of a flat rate of two dollars a month, or raising the taxes, or a fifty cent sticker, I was against a flat rate, because it was very, to me, that it wasn't going to cover everybody just right. So the fifty cent stickers, doesn't bother me, it adds up to two dollars, I put fifty cents on every bag, I put a bigger bag. How have the people been turning into you people? Are they, is it costing a pile of money by putting these fifty cent stickers on? Is everybody happy with, I mean, a, a small family shouldn't be paying as much as, next door, she's got three kids, two on diapers, I don't know how many bags she puts out, she's not complaining, she's putting the stickers on her bag. I was finding, my brother was picking up stickers and bringing them home, he found them on the road, they were falling off the bag, it was coming off the bag, it was going with them, so I was stapling mine on, to make sure they stayed on. These were not supposed to be able to come off easy, but evidently they were, because he was thinking...
It's not, it's not a perfect system, Diana, nothing is a perfect system, and we're really still partially in this experimental stage, John.
Well, I didn't know if those stickers were coming off, and off the bag, or if they're picked up, is what I'm saying. I, that, I, he doesn't get any more of those anyhow. But the stickers, as far as I'm concerned, was okay. It didn't put me in a hole.
Well, I'd say this much, that our trash removal costs are a lot less than most places. A lot less.
I was there, I have a friend in my town, and she has to pay two dollars a week, we got, she's all by herself. And they have, and recycling, they have to recycle trash mail separate, that has to go in a bag. Things can be different, a lot different in other cities than they are here.
And we don't charge for recycling, some cities do. Brian?
Your Honor, the question I have is regards to the trash stickers, is if you put it onto the real property taxes, and have it such so that nobody can get an exemption from that, they have exemptions for any other reasons, but they have it strictly for the real property taxes, I mean, there's a percentage of people, too, that can only, that can also write that off in regards to their taxes also, at the end of the year, when they claim it.
Yeah, that's true. You know, that was one of the original reasons why I was in favor of that, but it still discriminates against the property owners by charging them for somebody else's trash, that's part of the problem. And not everybody takes that exemption.
You mean as far as people being exempt?
No. It's a, it's a deduction. Talking about the tax being a deduction, if you itemize. But I don't know if there's many people in City Fulton that itemize. Not when you got sixty-three percent are on welfare.
You hit the nail right on the head, Your Honor. There's fifty-three percent on welfare, they live in all kinds of units, and again, I'm probably selfishly looking at it from my angle, but I don't know, you know, fifty cents a bag, you know, I really have to police these things. And I know a lot of places, and so do all you all, and when these people don't do this, their garage, their garage is full of garbage. Now, this thing goes, and I don't think if you do your numbers right, with the numbers I got here a little while ago, I don't think a buck a bag is gonna beat you three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for next year, plus it's not gonna make up your shortfall of this year, probably for what, a hundred and seventy-five million dollars, I don't know you're gonna make that up. But I agree, the sticker's the best way to go. It's, boy, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a bath, you're gonna find a lot of garbage, you know, here. And another thing I want to bring up, by the way, here, it really doesn't have too much to bear on the garbage fee, but the brochure that you go by is not up to date. It's not. And if a person follows that to the letter, he will get his garbage, or they will get their garbage returned. So what are you guys gonna do about bringing this up to date? And another thing that you have in the city of Fulton, you have a huge section of the Spanish people, and this is not in Spanish. So they don't really, first of all, it's not up to date, second of all, even if it was up to date, it isn't in a language they understand, so who will attend to this one? Or us?
Well, that's a good point about the brochure, and then we can talk to Buck Graham and see if we can arrange to get that updated.
I think the county did that for us originally, didn't they?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yeah, they did.
So maybe they can send us an updated version of that.
At that point, I'd be translated by, let him look at a card, and I'll be glad to pass it on to Buck. And supposedly, she has got a new update, and that I will gladly pass on to you. But these are just some of the problems that are out there that, you know, everybody's living with day to day. And if it's one thing I want to do, I just want to do what's right. Sometimes it's hard to do because you're not getting the backup, you're being, you're six guys, five guys.
Well, all this trash and recycling thing is new, a lot of it is, and, you know, we're all trying to feel our way around with it, and doing the best we can. Let me say one thing, we're awful lucky to have a viable landfill. A lot of counties don't.
That's for sure.
And the town of Webb in Old Forge, where I have a camp, they just recently closed the landfill, and I want to tell you, it ain't no fun.
Don't be mean to the governor. Yeah, you bet.
Lot of places like Syracuse talk about it for years, never do anything about it, and look what they're doing now. So you gotta... What'd you say, Al?
I said the state approved the Syracuse incinerator today, they're gonna start making them foundations in them in two weeks, according to the TV tonight. About twenty years, trying to get that incinerator built in Syracuse.
Yeah, and they're not any closer now than they were twenty years ago.
Yeah, it was okay by some state authority today.
Or to a landfill. Now, I gotta say one thing, our county does get things done, and we're darn lucky to have it. Anybody else?
Yeah, in reference to, I think, Mr. Gantley, as far as the Spanish-speaking people, we do live more in a multicultural society than what we did before, especially in the sixth ward, and I know, I see them all around. And I think it's not their fault a lot of times for not going along with the ordinances, because it hasn't been explained to them how we expect them to live, how we expect them to blend in with the community. They're there, I mean, we can't tell them to leave, they have a right to live there. But I think if maybe some of this is HUD housing, maybe someone from the CDA should explain to them, you know, when they rent the apartments, get someone to interpret in Spanish on how they're expected to blend with the community.
Yeah, rural communities are incorporated, those are the people that I have contacted to do this service for me. And it's a Christine Fernandez that's going to, number one, get me an updated brochure, number two, translate this into Spanish, so that these people can read this and understand. Because these people actually, they want to comply, they're good people, you know, and I just, I have to work with them, they are my tenants, and so I want to do as much as I can help them with, and I also want to do what's right here. Just, it takes a lot of doing sometimes, and I just don't want people to get upset through this interim council.
Right, I've been talking to some people in my ward this week, and your ward too, I know you have houses in my ward, and we talked about this particular problem, that we do have a language barrier and we need to deal with it. So I am working on it.
Any more discussion?
Resolved, effective January three, nineteen ninety-three, it will be required that two garbage stickers be placed on each bag for garbage picker, pickup pursuant to subsection ninety-two dash seven-one of the Fulton City Code.
I'll move it. Second? Roll call vote, please.
First ward?
No.
Second ward?
Just one comment. I'd also like to point out that if we didn't do this, it would add between six and eight dollars a thousand on the taxes if we kept it at the fifty cents. So I'm gonna vote yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
Motion is carried, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number two, please.
That's been taken off till the fifty.
Yeah, that's referred to the ordinance committee.
Correct.
Anyone have anything? Yeah, yes, Alice.
In reference to that number two article there, you know, the Stanley Green Roofing, you said that it was not given to Schu because the insurance company wanted the lowest. Now, will the insurance companies always insist on the lowest bid even if it's not the best? I mean, will it have to be that way?
I can't answer that question. Go ahead, Joe.
There's a little background on this. The reason that we did not accept a low bid at first is that Stanley Green Roofing put in a paragraph that said that this was based on using prevailing wage rates. We were a little skeptical of that statement, because they stated that if, in fact, after they started the project and they didn't use them, that the city could be subject to a thirty-three percent increase from the original bid. Our city attorney said that we should confer with the insurance company. We didn't want to be penalized for something we had no control over. So what the insurance company told me is, we do not have to worry about that, because they're gonna deal directly with the roofer and they will pay them. So any penalties imposed other than the original low quote will be paid by the insurance company. We didn't penalize Schu because they weren't a very good contractor, it's just that the city would have to pay eight thousand dollars more for nothing.
Well, I was just wondering, because when he said that the insurance companies didn't want to accept the higher bid, I was wondering if it meant that insurance companies would always want you to take the lowest, sometimes that could be a problem, because you'd take the lowest and it would not be quality work, it would cost more in the long run.
Well, I want to remember, too, Alice, that very few bids jobs the city gets into involve items that are covered by insurance. Most bids are for work or materials that have nothing to do with any loss that's covered by insurance. You do have a problem with insurance coverage, there's no question about it, that they can control whoever you're going to give the job to, but also keep in mind that the work is warranted by the contractor. Yes, Don?
At Stanley Green, I've had some dealings with him, he's a good company. Company, been in business for years.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else they want to bring before the council? Most to adjourn to executive session.
Abol.
Second? All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Carry.